Saco City Council Meeting for Monday, May 16, 2022. Let the record reflect that Councilor Archer is not present this evening. He's been excused. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own, without any means of surrender or agreement with any other state or country.
Thank you very much. A couple of items under General this evening. Is first up is Item A, Main Arbor Week. The City of Saco is pleased to announce that we have been designated a Tree City USA for the 12th year in a row by the Arbor Day Foundation. This recognition demonstrates the commitment that the Saco Parks and Recreation Department has to ensure that Saco's urban landscape remains rich with a variety of tree species that are vibrant, healthy, and safe. Arbor Week in Maine is this week and is an excellent time to spotlight the work done by the Parks and Rec team and their dedication to keeping trees a vital part of Saco's community landscape. The Tree City USA program has been greening up cities and towns across America since 1976. It is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. Saco joins a select number of cities and towns in the state of Maine that share this recognition. I'll now read the official Arbor Week proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas in 1978, the state of Maine first celebrated Arbor Week during the third full week of May. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for the wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of the City of Saco, do hereby proclaim May 16 through May 20, 2022, as the celebration of Arbor Week. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Week and support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Up next is Item B under General, another proclamation. Kids to Parks Day, proclaiming May 21, 2022 as Kids to Parks Day in Saco. Whereas May 21, 2022, is the 12th Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Days empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. I might be saying that wrong. I apologize. And whereas Kids to Park Days will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas Kids to Park Days will recognize the importance of recreating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, do hereby proclaim May 21, 2022, Kids to Parks Day. Thank you for that. Those are the two proclamations. And at this time, I would like to bring up State Senator Donna Bailey for a legislative sentiment for retired police officer Steve Garrison. State Senator and State Representative Copeland, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just for those who don't know, a legislative sentiment is the highest honor that the Maine State Legislature can bestow upon a group or an individual. It is something that someone has to be nominated for, and then the whole House and Senate have to vote for. And so I was honored to put in a request to recognize Detective Garrison, who I think is present here, if you'd like to come up, sir, and put in this legislative sentiment and have it approved. And I'm going to ask Representative Copeland if she would read the sentiments. The state of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing Steve Garrison of Saco, an officer with the Saco Police Department on his retirement after 35 years of service to his community. Officer Garrison worked as a detective and was an extremely accomplished drug recognition expert. And he significantly contributed to public safety by working diligently to find and stop impaired drivers. He supported the department's annual Sox for Seniors fundraiser, supported veterans, and engaged with communities' younger members on Halloween. And before joining the Saco Police Department, Officer Garrison served in the United States Army with the military police, and also served the citizens of Vermont as a corrections officer and a police officer. His prior service bringing him to a total of nearly 45 years of law enforcement service. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with, on behalf of the 130th Legislature and the people of the state of Maine. And it is signed by Troy Jackson, President of the Senate, Derek Grant, Secretary of the Senate, Ryan Affecto, Speaker of the House, and Robert Hunt, Clerk of the House. That's wonderful. I'm so proud of you.
It's been a hell of a ride. And I was thinking about it the other day. It doesn't seem like it's been since 1978 that I walked into the recruiting station and a guy with a tank top and jeans asked if he could help me. And I said, no, I need to see the Army recruiter. He said, that's me. I said, step into your office. And 35 days later, I was in Alabama. And it just doesn't seem like it's been that long. It really doesn't. I've liked working in Saco. The biggest reason I moved to Maine to begin with is that I want to be along the coast. And Charlie Labonte, who was the captain back then, really took an interest in talking to me and trying to recruit me for the department compared to other places. So that's why I ended up here. And again, it's been a hell of a ride. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that completes General. That brings us to Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents this evening? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The site committee met today for school construction, went over the three sites that have been narrowed down, pros and cons. And I just wanted to remind the public that there's a meeting, a public meeting, on the 24th, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM at SMS. It may be broadcast on the Internet, too. I'm not positive on that, though, to basically reveal those results to the public. So I'm highly encouraging as many people to participate as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents to council? Seeing no further committee correspondents, moving on to Item 6. That is Public Comment. There's one person that has signed up. That is David Plaven. Please come forward and speak directly into the microphone and present your comments to the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Plaven, 2 Surf Street in Saco, also the Vice President of SOS Saco Bay. And I just wanted to take a moment of your time to thank you for all your support of the budget amendment for hosting a county dredge in Saco. It's a huge step forward in our battle to rehabilitate the Saco shoreline. Your willingness to take time to meet with us, to work with us, and suggest what we needed to do was a successful template for city government working with citizens, uniting behind a cause that benefits the entire city. The payoff was a 7-0 vote, which I'm grateful for, plus the support of the mayor and the city administrator, has moved us to the brink of acquiring the dredge. We can now present the county commissioner's management plan, and all the contingencies for that purchase will have been met. And our deadline for that is the end of this month, so we're working on that now. We still have some mounds to climb to get the Army Corps to fulfill its obligation, and that won't be easy. But with all of us working together, there is optimism that we may finally be able to see some light at the end of the tunnel. I thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who did not sign up or would like to address the City Council, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Broschu from 257 Buxton Road. Just wanted to take a moment to continue the thanks to all of you as councilors and city staff that have worked through the entire budget process, being part of city groups and boards in the past, knowing that it's a very time-consuming and thankless job for all the information you need to review that's prepared for you, as well as the barrage of opinions that you receive and the best way to go. And thankfully, we've made it through that process and can continue to work on other city issues. Secondly, I'm not sure if it's a Public Works or Parks and Rec issue. I just wanted to thank them. The restoration of the benches that were refinished during the winter and put out on Main Street are very welcoming to continue our downtown feel. It's a nice attribute to our downtown and helps with our tourist base. They're very welcoming and attractive, so thanks for that.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the City Council?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. And I really want to thank all of you for your deliberations tonight and your discussion as far as contract zones under new business. And I also want to personally point out to Councilor Hatch for the months and the due diligence and the work that you put behind your thoughts, your comments in tonight's packet. I really do appreciate that. And again, I look forward to everyone's deep thoughts and how we're going to address contract zones going forward, since we had them in 1994 until now. And I think this council could really be able to put this ordinance to good use, to rest, and let's move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. I'd like to just echo some comments that Ms. Archer made. I'm very delighted that contract zone discussion is on your agenda this evening. I think we all know that it has been a long time in coming. I think that you will find many folks eager to share with you their thoughts as well during some public comments, hopefully in the next coming weeks, on contract zone ordinance. I'd also like just to refer you back to the November 8, 2021 council meeting. You had a joint meeting with the planning board. And I think that meeting was very, a good sign that the planning board itself had some very good questions about the contract zone ordinance. I look forward to a robust discussion with you all, and I hope that compliance, oversight, the contract zone agreements themselves, that the language be tightened and improved. And I really would like to also commend Councilor Hatch for the draft that he brought forward. I think it's a really good starting point, and I appreciate the time and effort that he put into the document that's in your packet this evening. So thank you.
Good evening. Dan Lasky, 23 Skyline Drive. I just want to say I'm behind Phil's and the council's to take a look at contract zone to start the discussion and see where we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Moving on, brings us to Item 7. There's no minutes to approve tonight. That brings us to Item 8, and that is to approve the June through September meeting dates. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm not sure, but I think we have a date in the mix that is incorrect. The August 27th, I think August 27th is a Saturday? And I'm wondering if it should be the 29th or the 22nd? That's the only point of clarification. I have no problem with the motion as presented. Oh, I have 27th in my packet. Okay.
I'm using the packet off the website, and it's the 22nd.
Okay. I thought I had done the same.
Which is a Monday.
So I wonder if that was updated? Okay, thank you. I stand corrected.
Any further discussion on the consent items? Roll call, vote, our consent agenda. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 6-0. Brings us to Item 9, action items. First up is a public hearing, Item A, Chapter 186 Updates Addressing Standards, Page 3 in the packet. That is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Saco assigns residential and commercial addresses to structures in the city, where it is the responsibility of the city to protect the lives and property of the residents. It is the desire of the city to operate efficient and effective public safety services, where these efficient and effective public safety operations are inhibited by the current inconsistent street numbering process. The updated ordinance will give clear guidance on addressing, renaming, or readdressing of streets, as there are a number of duplicate road names and addresses across the city which have life safety impacts. Moved to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call to open the public hearing. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to open the public hearing at 6:48. If there's any member of the public that would like to address this issue, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Johnston?
Moved to close the public hearing and set a final reading for June 27, 2022.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Hatch. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to point out to the public that there are a number of Ward 4 and Camp Ellis properties that'd be affected by this change, but I've not yet heard from any constituents. If any would like to be heard, please contact me.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I was, I just wanted to bring to the table a constituent had connected with me in terms of addressing fire lanes and paper streets, and that does not seem to be engaged in this update. So I just kind of pushed that back to the staff to figure out if that is relevant or not relevant, particularly paper streets that may have buildings on them, I guess, would be of concern. So it's just a question. I don't need an answer tonight.
Okay. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I guess I'm along the same lines as Counselor Berman. I'm just curious, did this follow a notification process, or was it just posted once in the paper? I just, I'm kind of surprised that we don't have more people here to speak on this.
City Administrator Ken Ratt, do you have an answer as to whether the homes on the potential streets were notified of potential changes to their numbering system?
Yeah, I'd ask Deputy Chief Huntress or Director Toomey if you have further information on the nursing process.
So this was given to the city clerk to post as far as the public meeting and everything that way. We've had residents that have called us and asked about it, and we've talked to them and explained to them, here's the reasons why we're looking to change the ordinance.
Would you say you've received a large number of phone calls? No?
I would not say we received a large number. We have, I believe, when you looked at the duplicate road names, there are 25 roads that are similarly named that could be in conflict, and that equates to looking at assessing about 286 residents. In what we've already done with having to renumber Tasker Street due to back lots being renumbered, we've already probably, in excess of that, have already renumbered several houses more than what we're looking at doing here. And we're not looking to do this all at once. These are big projects. And if you, the city council, say, we don't want to do this, then we won't do this. We're just looking at moving forward for life safety purposes. Do we want to have similar road names within the city? Or do we want to have it that when somebody calls 911, the fire EMS police know exactly where they're going?
So is this up on the city website or up on the police department website, kind of like with a, in red that says, hey, this could be happening, so that folks could like click on it and see maybe what exactly you're looking at?
We have not put it onto the police department website, no. Other than what's on the city council for here, I don't believe it's on the city website yet.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston, does that answer your question?
It does, but I would appreciate if we actually noticed the individual properties, because this seems like one that has the potential to, after we start changing things, come back and, you know, they haven't been heard.
Counselor Berman?
I was going to echo Counselor Johnson, but ask it as a question. At what point in the process do the individual property owners get individually notified?
So anytime that we're looking at renaming a street, all those property owners get notified, and we don't pick the road name. We try to go to all of them and get consensus from them, because we want their input of what they want to see their road named and what their addresses will be. So we, everybody who has property on whatever road may be looking at readdressed, we get their input long beforehand, and that's why it's a long process to do. You try to go to consensus. You won't maybe get everybody, but we'll look at what is the majority of people want for that road name. And we've done that when the city council changed the ordinance for private driveways. When you have three or more houses off a private driveway, we talk to everybody on there. All of you come to a consensus on what you want for a road name, and then we address from that. So there is a lot of public input on those affected streets and roads.
Could we ask Communications or you to work with Communications to put together a map with the roads that may be affected that could be released prior to the final reading? Is that possible?
Yep.
Thank you.
Maybe even put into the newsletter that the city puts out prior Maybe even put into the newsletter that the city puts out prior to the, to the final reading?
Absolutely.
Counselor Johnston?
This impacts numbering of apartments too, correct? That's the way I read it. Is that accurate? That potentially?
It does. Whenever we're doing addressing, whether it's a new home, readdressing, or renaming, all city departments are notified and are included in that. We have the addressing committee, which is made up of several departments, from code to assessing to wastewater to police, fire, planning. We all meet, and when we are doing the addressing part, we're all having the input and involved in that. So, it's not just one department saying, this is what it's going to be. Here in Saco, we do that as a committee to make sure we're covering all of our bases and we're making sure that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
At 6:55. That brings us to item B on page 12 in your packet, another public hearing for the new application for a special entertainment permit and request for extension of license privileges for an on-premises establishment, Fun Town Splashtown USA and Center Plate. And that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fun Town Splashtown USA has applied for a new special entertainment permit to hold 21-plus after-hours events on July 16th, 2022, August 13th, 2022, and August 27th, 2022. Volume Services Incorporated, doing business as Center Plate, 774 Portland Road, currently has a liquor license that covers three areas of the amusement park. Center Plate will be requesting an extension of license privileges for an on-premises establishment from the state to cover the requested permitted area for, area for these special events. The special entertainment permit will be concurrent with the liquor license for Center Plate, which expires on August 30th, 2022. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93.2, and MRSA Title 28A, Liquors, Subsection 6531. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call to open the public hearing. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 at 6:56. This time, I'd like to invite Fun Town Splashtown to come up and make a statement.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, people of the council. I appreciate your time. My name's Corey Hutchinson. I'm the general manager of Fun Town Splashtown. Really, I can explain sort of how this was born, if ever any of you, I assume, I hope, have been to the park over the years. This has really come out of a lot of comments that we've had from people who have been to the park in the past. I run into people all the time, whether it be at Hannaford or wherever we might be when I'm away from work, saying, you know, hey, oh, wow, you're still at the park. Been a long time. Boy, my kids are all grown up, haven't been there in years, you know, and we really miss it, and, you know, great memories and all these type of things. That's sort of the initial thing that it came out of. A secondary thing would be, we have lots of guests who came as children with their families over all of these years that now are, you know, young families of their own. They come to the park often throughout the summer, don't have that opportunity, though, to get on the rides, do the things that they want to do, because they're catering mostly to their children. This is an opportunity now to do something totally different that the park has never done, open the park up to only adults, no children, and let people come to the park and enjoy it in a slightly different atmosphere. Really, what we're asking for is to expand that liquor license from just what we have now, which are beer tents, and seeing that everyone coming into the park will be 21 years and older and be carded, obviously, we have our security measures all in place, that we'd like, allow people to walk around the park with an adult beverage. That's really what the crux to this whole thing is. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments that anybody had, if anyone has any.
Thank you. Any questions, Corey? Counselor Gunn?
I just, more of an informative question, because of the three nights that are requested, sort of like a, kind of a, doing like a trial period to see how it goes, that sort of thing?
In reality, this is the first time that everybody's hearing that there could potentially be three nights. At this point, we've only announced one night to the general public. We've only put one night on sale. That happened today, actually. We want to see how things go, and then we would push forward on the other two evenings. We assume that it's going to be a great event. We've got this idea from the, what I commented on, but also Storyland. Our friends in the amusement park industry started doing this two years ago up in Jefferson, New Hampshire, and through them, their comments were, what a great time it was, and how many people turned out, and people loved it, you know. We all love our families and our children, but sometimes to get away from the children is a great thing. And so far, on social media-wise, if you look at the comments, there's lots of those late twenties to late thirty-year-olds saying, hey, let's get a sitter for the night, and tagging their friends in it, and that, that sort of is where it comes out of. So, right now, we've officially, on our calendar, just have the one date. Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, the public hearing's now open. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this matter, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Gunn?
I move to close the public hearing and be at order that the city council grant the new application submitted by Fun Town Splashtown USA for special entertainment permit and Volume Services Incorporated, doing business as Center Plate, for an extended, extension of license privileges for an on-premises establishment. Said special entertainment permit will run concurrent with the liquor license for Volume Services, doing business as Center Plate. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn, second by Counselor Johnston, close the public hearing and approve the order. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to approve at 7:01 PM. That brings us to item C, a first reading, page 20 in your packet, Amendment to City Code, Chapter 11, Elections, Subsection 11-9, Boundary Lines. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to defer this to another counselor.
Thank you. Is there a counselor that would like to read this into the record? Counselor Berman?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State law and the city charter and code require redistricting each decade in order that the election wards have roughly equal populations and may not differ in number of inhabitants by more than 10% of the inhabitants in the smallest district created. Redistricting presented for adoption is based on the 2020 census. The City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the first reading on the amendments to the City Code, Chapter 11, Elections, Section 11-9, Boundary Lines, by adopting the proposed ward boundary line descriptions dated May 11th, 2022, and the corresponding proposed ward boundary map dated May 11th, 2022, as a representation of the boundaries adopted and moved as at the public hearing for June 6th, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Counselor McPhail?
Yes, I'd like to ask City Clerk Hughes. Could you come up for a moment?
Clerk Hughes does have a presentation, if you want to wait till after that to ask her questions. Michelle, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So, every 10 years municipalities must review the latest census information to determine if ward boundary lines need to be moved into the ward more or out of the ward due to the balance of population in each census block. This takes place after the main state legislature adopts the state reapportionment of the Senate and House, which was completed on September 29th, 2021. The Secretary of State's office completed all the street list and updates with the new legislative districts on January 20th this year, and then each municipality was required to review all the street list and data to make sure each street had the correct legislative districts. This was completed on January 4th. At that time, the municipal clerks then received the go-ahead to start the municipal redistricting We had a team of three people consisting of engineer and technician Kyle Mundorf from Public Works, deputy assessor Kate Kern, and myself working on the local redistricting. Phase one of the project started with the engineer and technician importing all the 2020 census data from the main office of GIS and layered it on to the current ward boundary map, printed out the maps for the project, and provided the population breakdown for each ward, which you'll find on page 29. Phase two of the project, that's when I reviewed the ward boundary map with the census data to determine if adjustments were needed. The only data that was used to make determinations concerning census block and population shifts from one ward to another was the 2020 census data. Consideration was not given to any current or anticipated housing development or other potential projects which might affect population changes in future years, as state law requires us to consider the data from the latest census only. Also, no input was received from any elected or appointed official, staff, or member of the public. Phase three of the project was when the recommendations for adjustments were sent to the engineer and technician who set the new ward boundary lines and produced the new ward map. Phase four, the deputy assessor and myself drafted the new ward boundary line descriptions for the city code, and the final phase is tonight with the council reviewing the recommended changes to the ward boundary description lines and correspondent map. If you refer to page 29, you'll see there's a graph on there. The population from 2020, houses at 20,00381. The difference from the largest ward to the smallest ward was 574. Now, with the recommended changes, the difference is 217. There's also detail showing each ward population and the exact adjustments that were moved from, or shifted from ward to ward. That's what I have.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail, did your question get answered, or do you have, still have a question?
Is there, my, I'm not opposed to the redistricting of this. My concern is, I know that we, the state recommends that we don't take any future development into consideration, but unfortunately, we know we have some pretty significant development going on in the next few years. My concern is doing this now, knowing and then having even a larger potential during the next census. Is, do you have a backup or a secondary option that could be presented to us, or the possibility of at some point, maybe if there's an outside source that could help review the data and the lines?
Um, no, there is no other alternative at this time.
How difficult or time constraint would it be to possibly present a second option? If, I mean, again, based on anybody else's, you know, particular areas of concern, or...
The issue is that we need to have this done within 12 months of when the main state legislature approved their reapportionment. So, we're on a tight timeline right now, because the Secretary of State's office didn't go and get their stuff completed until the end of January. So, right now, with the meetings that we have scheduled, this needs to be done by the end of June, because the new ordinance needs 30 days to go into effect and be ready for the nomination process, the packets and stuff for August 1st.
City Administrator Kenrath?
Michelle, I just wanted to, could you maybe give the council an update on, so, I mean, you've been here for 30-something years, how the city has done this in the past? You've been through several cycles. Has this process differed from previous times, or maybe just give us some history of how you, how this has been handled in the past for the city in the last 30 years or so?
Yes. The clerk always is the one that goes and starts reviewing the process. I don't know of any other people who've been involved in it. And that's what, what's happened the whole time that I've been here for the, as Ryan noted, the 30-some-odd years. But it's kind of a simple process that the data gets imported into the ward map. You can look at the ward maps. I've gone through and printed those out, provided them in the packet, and they're also in the more section where you can increase the sizes a little bit more to see the numbers better.
Michelle, I see in the, in the packet, there was a, the next page up on page 25, there's a 2015 City of Saco Ward Map. Was that, was that the last time that these ward lines were changed?
Yes. And at that time, what happened was there was some issues with staffing at the city at the time. We did not meet the 12-month period, but we also did not have an election of local representatives coming up for that November. So, we were able to stretch it out another year. This time around, because we do stagger terms for the representatives, we're not able to do that. If we don't make that 12-month, then I believe it needs to be elected at large.
Counselor Berman?
Thanks. Just, just a question about, you explained the process by which you move population around from one ward to the other based on changes in the 2020 census. I'm curious if there are desired shapes or contiguity, or how you decide which neighborhoods to move where? You know, is there an attempt to create the most regular shapes possible? Is it, if you could explain that process to me a little bit?
Not, not really. We try to keep, like, when I started with Ward 1, instead of going up into the Ward 2 area, we tried to keep Ward 1 on one side of 112, Ward 2 on the other side of 112. By doing that, that led me into Ward 5, the border and neighbor and stuff, and then I kind of look at the, the, the amount that, the goal was, was 2,00911. So, we were trying to look at that number and come close to that as we could, and sometimes you have to go through these a couple times to try to get the numbers to come out, so it's fairly even.
Thank you.
I will note that in Ward 6, there was a small section, actually, it's 309 people that borders Main Street, North Street, Union Street, and Clark Street. It would look as though that could be moved over to Ward 7, but because the ward clerk in Ward 6 lives on Union Street, that wasn't possible. So, I did want to note that. And that's another thing, we need to look at the current elected officials to make sure that we're not moving somebody out of the ward, and this includes the council, school board, wardens, and ward clerks.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I was on council the last time we approved this map, and I, from what I recall, it was rather insignificant changes. I remember just a small area in my ward being absorbed by Ward 5. This still seems relatively insignificant to me. Correct me if I'm wrong, it looks, it looks more like Ward 3 has grown the most.
Correct.
We've had to correct Wards 5, 7, and 6 to make up for that population growth.
Yes.
So, I, I mean, I'm fine with the map as is, unless there's specifics as to why we have issues with it.
Counselor Gunn, then Counselor... Councilor Gunn, then Councilor Purdy. Councilor Gunn.
Thank you. And first thing I want to say is, to your point, Clerk Hughes, though, I was concerned that the way the charter is written, that it's sort of, it might hamstrung the staff when it comes to redoing these boundary lines, though, because obviously, the last thing we want to see is a member of the school board, a member of the council, basically forfeit their seat because their line is moved. However, the way the charter is written, it pretty much gives us no option unless there's a charter amendment. And if it can't be done in terms of an amendment to this, it's a charter amendment, I think I'd be interested in putting out there because, call it a tenure office act, call it whatever you will, though, but I think if, if residents in a, in a community, in a ward, elect somebody to represent them, and because of something that's mandated from the state, the person finds themselves out of their district by literally a neighborhood or a road, that the person be at least allowed to, you know, finish off the year, though, because now that we have this new in-place system of replacing counselors or school board members that vacate their seat during the year, so therefore, the entire neighborhood is not disenfranchised, but it's just because of an arbitrary move of the line, though. So that's something I'd be interested in putting out there for the council to consider going forward, so we don't obviously have to worry about people losing their seats while we're trying to do this. As it comes to your, the map, Clerk Hughes, though, for my money, it's perfectly, it looks perfectly fair, although aesthetically, I do have some issues with some of the things that ended, ended up happening. The two off the top of my head is sort of, when I, well, my ward lost a section sort of south of Hannaford, it sort of created this bulge where Ward 4 kind of goes into 7. And also, down in the Rosewood Avenue neighborhood, though, basically, the neighborhood's kind of split in half between now 1 and 5. And my, my, my approach to this is I want to be able to layman a woman out there to be able to sort of like, you know, if they're going down Route 1, they can say, "That's Ward 3 over there, that's Ward 4 over there," so they have some idea of where their elected officials are, of what their community is. It's just, I mean, it may come off as aesthetics, but at the same time, I just think it makes more sense to like, if you have one cul-de-sac, and everybody in that cul-de-sac's in the same ward, then there's a little side road, yeah, that's where you maybe have the boundary, and you can always play around with some of the boundaries somewhere else. That being said, my last point is, just in terms of total fairness, I noticed there was no difference, like you said, to wards 2 and 4. And if we're going to do this, I think it's only fair just to make sure there's at least some modification to all wards, or we're non-wards, though, because it's, like I said, if we're, if a bunch of voters are going to wake up and find themselves in a different ward, I'd like to think that, you know, I like that to be fair for everybody. So, that's all I have to say on that one. Thank you.
Councilor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of the questions I had were answered during your presentation, so, thank you. The only thing that kind of sticks out to me, and I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other about the maps, or how it's drawn out, it, I don't have any real issues with that. The only, and I'm just looking at the, looking at the numbers, the one thing that sticks out to me is the 217 resident difference between Ward 3 and Ward 6. I know it's not supposed to be a 10, more than a 10% difference, according to the, according to the charter, the intro here. And a 217 resident difference between those two wards seems like we're, we're kind of pushing that 10% mark. I mean, we're at like 9%. So, that's perfectly within the guidelines. I, like I said, that's the only thing that really sticks out to me about it. Other than that, like I said, all my other answers were, questions were answered.
Any further questions? Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Just on the data, I want to make sure I'm reading that little graph right, specific to Ward 7. Is it saying that between 2020 and 2020, or 2010, is only a net increase of 18 people in Ward 7?
That's what it's saying, yes.
Wow, that's surprising. All right. Thank you.
Michelle, is that because, and I'm just taking a guess, is that because people left and then new people came in, or is it just that overall, there's been 18 more people? Because I think the addition of Cuts Avenue right there automatically covers more than 18.
Yeah, it's a fluid process. People are going to be moving here and, and moving out and stuff, so.
Any further questions on this item? Councilor Gunn.
Thank you. To Councilor McPhail's point, and no disrespect, I said to you, this, for the most part, fine map, but at the same time, I like to have our options open and also not think that we're on some sort of, we're pressured to make a split decision because of circumstances. What other option do we have in terms of outside, an outside group, a third party looking this over, I mean, a committee, a commission? I mean, what are our options?
So, under the state law, for the failure to enact an ordinance, the municipal legislative body must enact the apportionment ordinance within 12 months after the legislature has reapportioned the House and Senate districts. The ordinance must be enacted at least 90 days before a regular municipal election occurring within the 12-month period, or the previous reapportionment ordinance applies to that election. If the municipal, if the legislative body fails to enact an ordinance within the 12-month period, or at least 90 days within a regular, regular election occurring after the 12 months, all municipal officers to be elected must be elected at large and serve until their terms expire. Such at-large elections continue until the legislative body enacts an ordinance in accordance with subsection 1, at least 90 days before a regular municipal election. Would you like me to check with our city attorney?
So is, is the 12-month marker start after the September vote?
Yes.
Or after the January 1st vote, when they actually gave you the numbers?
It starts September, September 29th. Then the state, we had an election, of course, so the state was working on other things. And then they started working on the redistricting, they have to, the whole state of Maine go through all the streets, libraries, put all the districts in there that they think it should be, then we have to go through and review all that to determine if they've made any errors and report back to them a sign-off on it. Then they go and they let us know that we can move forward with our process.
Now, was the 2015 ward map created just because, or was it created based off the I wasn't here at that time. I was only elected December of 2015, so I don't have the background on that. Councilor Johnston, do you remember?
From what I recall, we were, again, late doing it, but it was to go off the 2010 census. I think it, I could be wrong, but I felt like it occurred actually before 2015, perhaps in the first year I was on council.
Yeah, the actually, the boundary lines, looking at the ordinance, they were amended on, in 2003, 2015, and this would be '22.
Early '15.
Councilor Berman, you had your hand up. Set. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote on this item? Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1 for first reading. Like we, like we talked about with the addressing standards, if we could put this on the website and also in any kind of correspondence to let people know, especially those who might be affected by their ward changing. That completes action items for this evening, brings us to item 10, page 32 in your packet, item A, Chapter 168 Updates. And Code Enforcement, Director Toomey.
Good evening. When Chapter 168 was amended back in November, they removed the word, or you removed the word caregivers. So, in the same time, the word medical marijuana should have been removed because it should have gone out with caregivers. So the way it is written now, it's almost like we're forbidding recreational and marijuana sales, which we're not attempting to do that. This chapter regulates dispensaries, and dispensaries is medical marijuana. So this is just a correction that sort of happened back in November. We're taking out the words "medical," so that if in the future you want to allow recreation, we can amend this again, but at this point, someone could read that we're not allowing any sales whatsoever, so we're trying to amend it, correct it tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Toomey? Councilor Berman?
Not a question, really, just a confirmation. I was confused because I remembered our intent, and I thought we took care of it, but I actually went back and watched the video and read the minutes, and indeed, with all the striking additions, we did not remove that word "medical." That remained in, and so that was just an error in, I think, my amendments that weren't caught. So I apologize, and thank you for catching it now, and agree, it needs to be removed.
We didn't realize it had to come back, so we would have amended it, but we, you have to do it, so that's why we're here.
Councilor Berman, are you willing to be the council resource for this?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Any further questions for Director Toomey on this item? Seeing no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item B under New Business, page 34 in your packet, and that is a petition for zoning map amendment, rezone for Woodman Ave from Portland Road, PR zone to medium-density residential, MDR zone. And that is City Planner Garnum.
Good evening, Mayor Doyle, councilors. I'm Jason Garnum, Saco City Planner. As you see in your packet, Patrick and Veronica Labey submitted a petition to amend Saco's zoning map for their property that they own at For Woodman Avenue. The property is currently zoned, it's in the PR Portland Road zoning district, and they propose to amend that to put their property in the MDR zoning district. As you can see in your packet, their, their property, along with a couple others on their street, do not have frontage on Portland Road, and they are currently developed as residential properties. So after evaluating the characteristics of the Labey's property, along with their neighbors, looking at the purpose, purpose statements of the applicable zoning districts, and looking at the comprehensive plan, you can see that both city staff and the planning board recommend approving the, this proposed rezone. That summarizes the application. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Jason? Councilor Purdy, are you okay with being the council resource for this item?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
I did fail to mention one other thing. During the planning board meeting, the question did come up about the couple of other properties on that street that do not have frontage on Portland Road, yet are also within the PR zoning district. Butters were notified of this zoning amendment, and staff did not hear from any of them, but I did want to point out that I believe you do have the authority to, if you deem it appropriate, to include other properties in the zoning map amendment. But again, I don't have any correspondence from those neighbors indicating one way or another whether they find that appropriate. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Councilor Berman.
That does then lead me to a question. Could you, could you talk about the adverse consequences, or not, of moving other properties from the PR zone into the zone?
I don't really know of any. These properties are all developed with single-family residences. They don't and won't, for the foreseeable future, have frontage or access to Portland Road, which is the commercial corridor. So of course, I was not here when the zoning map was drawn, but I, I think it's possible that the map reflects maybe a lack of very property-by-property, you know, analysis or care. And you could argue that the comprehensive plan and zoning map as it's currently written simply don't reflect current conditions and would have the, under, under the current zoning, have the potential to create non-conformities out of existing residential uses, which I, I suspect is not a real desirable outcome.
Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think, going back through that ZORs process, consultants and the members really tried, similar to the last conversation we had about, or ward districts, not to create, you know, incompatible zones or uses in zones, or a bisect properties. So, from what I recall, this used to be the B2B, so those properties were already previously zoned in what was a somewhat mixed commercial use. So we kind of just renamed it PR and added probably some new uses. But yeah, clearly, I would agree that I don't think single-family homes fit into the PR zone, and I don't think that was ever the intent. So it makes sense to me to add this property, and I would agree the other, I think it's 9 and 13, and potentially 11 Ross Road, which is a bisected property. It's half in the PR and half in the MDR. So maybe we reach out to them or whatnot, but I would suggest those changes. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item C, Contract Zone Discussion, page 40 in your packet. And that is a memorandum to City Administrator Brian Kenrath from Saco, Councilor Ward 5. Councilor Hatch?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, can I just ask for five minutes?
Five-minute recess. I'm going to take a five-minute recess. Please be back by 7:35, 36. Please be back by 7:35, 36. Okay, welcome back. 7:36, we're back in session. Thank you for the recess, and at this time, I'd like to, Counselor Hatch, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm not going to elaborate deeply on the information that's contained in the packet. I'm hopeful that all of my fellow councilors have had a chance to review that. I do want to just give you some high-level commentary, and then I'm hopeful that that will lead into some good discussion here from my council colleagues. As you know, we've been trying to bring this issue to the forefront. My hope was to produce information and a document that can get us started on a very robust and expeditious discussion. I tried to cite some background information and some acknowledgement of justification for some of my thoughts, but these are my thoughts. They're not an exhaustive list. I hope that my fellow council colleagues will add to the list if they feel it's appropriate. I've gone through and highlighted issues that I feel are important to consider in changing the contract zone ordinance. It's not only a reflection of my thoughts, but it's thoughts that have, contains thoughts that have been submitted to me through my constituents. I also made an effort to actually redraft the contract zone agreement. I'm not an attorney. However, I have drafted many legal documents in the past that have been reviewed by council. I tried to extract information from three other zoning ordinances in municipalities that abut us, grabbing information that I felt was an improvement to what we had. That's all in redlining. I have had contributions to my effort in the rewriting of the ordinance through other professionals who I have relationships with, including actually a couple of attorneys who have actually argued before our planning board for contract zones, and they helped me identify what they felt were some of the weaknesses that they were able to capitalize on, so trying to tighten those up as well. So, what you see in the packet is simply a proposed redraft of the ordinance. The current ordinance is in black, changes in red. They're not an exhaustive list, they're just suggested changes. Everything is open for discussion. I have no expectation that what we end up with at the end is going to be exactly this document. I hope it isn't. I hope that everybody has a chance to, not only at the council level, but in the planning department and planning board level, and public through public comment. I think as you look through the information, some of the key issues are clarity of language, you know, maybe a preliminary, non-binding review, contract compliance after the execution of the contract, which has been somewhat of a challenge for us, and standards as to how we terminate or extend effective dates. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm really hopeful that I have created a document here that gets the conversation started. I wanted it to be robust because I didn't want to start from scratch. Starting from scratch would take a long time, and I think, as far as I know, it's been several years, but Counselor Johnston's mentioned on a couple of occasions, goes back quite a ways. So, I'm hopeful that we can grab this, we can run with it collectively, and vet it, and vet it at all levels, and come back in the not-too-distant future with a document that we can put through the three-step process of first reading, a public hearing at the council level, and a final approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think this is a great start. I think, you know, Counselor Hatch and I had spoken previously about what I saw as deficiencies and he saw as deficiencies in the current ordinance. I think a lot of what he's incorporated into that draft has been captured, and in many ways, a lot of it is common-sense approach. I think, you know, one of the big things that I highlighted early on was the need for a preliminary meeting. This is something that, you know, our neighbor across the river does. I think it will go a long ways to hopefully improving relationships between the planning board and the council, because oftentimes, you know, from my own experience watching, it would appear as though the planning board doesn't really know what council wants ahead of time, and then oftentimes, it gets up to council, and it's nothing, you know, close to what the council really had in mind. So, if you start with council and some level of interest and indicate that ahead of time, you know, you can push it down to the planning board and have them do more of the planning process early on. So, I mean, I think that's a key thing that should be in there. Obviously, the compliance issue, not for every contract zone, but for many, have been an issue, and how we go about addressing that needs to be cleaned up. And again, I think Counselor Hatch presented some, you know, opportunities there, and again, I'm not an attorney either, but I like what's in there. So, and another thing I think that's important for councils in general, I've witnessed this myself through the years, you know, oftentimes, we make amendments at council level, and either they're not incorporated into the final document for whatever reason. I mean, we've seen that, you know, with zoning ordinances too. But they're also not very clear what the intent was, and so that's where you get a lot of these convoluted situations or ambiguous situations where it's, you know, we kind of put not only the developer, but staff into a tough position because they're trying to figure out what the intent was. So, I don't know if that can be incorporated, but it's certainly something, maybe a policy that we can create where, you know, if we're going to make these amendments, let's make sure they're fully vetted, and, you know, even if it means slowing the process down, what was the intent so we don't end up in these situations that we've seen ourselves in with several contract zones? You know, and one of the other things for me personally that I'd like to see is a requirement for a public benefit. There are other communities that have that. It is a contract, and therefore, the city should be receiving something in return. Every contract zone that I've voted in favor of, I've been pretty adamant about having something, you know, incorporated where I could, at the end of the day, say, well, this is what the city of Saco gained, not just what the developer gained. So, requiring that in the ordinance, I think is key. You know, and then the other thing that I've brought up several times, I think that we should incorporate all contract zones into the actual zoning ordinance, and that's really just for a housekeeping thing, but also, you know, so the public understands what's out there.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Where to start? Just given the conversations and public comment over the last several weeks, couple months, where I'm starting from, I just want to make myself clear, is I don't see contract zones as an out-of-control problem right now. At one point, they may have been, but in the last two and a half years since I've been sitting here, to my recollection, we've only approved two. We've amended two, and one of those amendments was simply an extension in time, and we've eliminated one, and there is a recommendation from the planning board from last week's meeting on dissolving another one, which, if that comes in front of us at our next meeting, gives us a net gain of zero contract zones in the last two and a half years. That being said, can things be done better? Probably. And I'd like to thank Counselor Hatch for submitting this. It's a great starting point, and it's a conversation that needs to be had. There's a lot of information here, and I guess my, I'll start with the pre-application portion of it. Concerns me on two fronts. Number one, I think it's redundant and causes extra work for city staff. They're going to have to prep it for a pre-council hearing before it goes to planning board, and then it's got to be prepped to come back to council after planning board. I just think it's a little redundant, and my second concern with that is that I don't necessarily think it's the council's place to push the planning board in one direction or another. The planning board is a separate body, and they make their own decisions, votes. They go through, they go through, they do deep dives into stuff that the council never even touches, where they're talking about lighting levels and, you know, impervious services and wetlands, and this is, these are things that the council generally doesn't delve too deep into. I don't think it's proper for council to push their vote one way or the other by having a preliminary application. It's just my opinion, but like I said, I look forward to the continuing conversation about this, and again, thank you, Counselor Hatch, for giving us a starting point.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Hatch, for launching this initiative. Counselor Hatch and I have already spoken about some of the things I'm going to say now. I just want to share some of my thoughts. First, you know, I agree, I think, with Counselor Hatch's assertion that contract zones should be a relatively rare remediation for when the underlying zoning doesn't work. Perhaps, from my perspective, though, 50 on the books are probably less active, might meet that criteria. I don't know what percentage of our total buildings and projects 50 is, but I imagine it's a small fraction of a percent, which is probably about right. When I imagine contract zones, what I imagine them being for is when there's a project that provides some public good, something of use to the citizens of Saco, that doesn't conform to the underlying zone, and it's that public good that makes us want to provide that exemption to the underlying zone and make an exception for that property. And so, while in some sense, that does make it a special privilege, I don't think that negotiation or holding the developer accountable is the right way to see it. Instead, I think the right way to view it is that the city or the citizens of the city are benefiting from that project. Perhaps we need denser housing or more affordable housing. Perhaps we need additional services in some part of town. Perhaps we need the additional reputation or tourism or economic development opportunities that some project allows that the underlying zoning does not. And therefore, there is some wording in the proposed changes suggesting that underlying conformity is required. I think it can't be, and I think the public benefit comes from the nature of the project itself, not from trading land, not from providing money, but that the project benefits the people of Saco. Some things I really like in the proposal is, I think, changing the underlying zone, when possible, to accommodate the project is definitely the preferred tack to take as opposed to a contract zone. I like making them public and listed, and either part of the ordinance or in the registry of deeds, so they're easy to find and track. I like thinking about how we're going to enforce the contract zones better and ensuring that that's part of each contract zone. I do also have some concerns. One of my concerns is about the pre-application process, and here, I have two levels of concern. The first is, part of what I'm trying to do as a counselor is advocate for our advisory committees. I can't possibly know everything. Indeed, that's why we have a conservation commission and a traffic safety committee and a planning board, is they're the ones who gain expertise in these topics, who dig deep, who dive into the details, and then with that expertise and deep dive, make recommendations to council. Of course, it's our purview and ultimately, our decision as to whether or not to accept their recommendation, but I'm concerned that if a contract zone comes to council first, it comes incomplete, not having gone through the rigor of the planning board, not having met the process and standards and answered the questions that they may have. And thus, I'm either evaluating an incomplete by definition project, in which case, I don't know what I'm evaluating, or I'm forcing them to do all that work and anticipate what it's going to be, or we have to ask those questions ourselves, in which case, we're usurping the role of the planning board. And so, that's one concern I have. The other concern I have is it's premature. While it's intended to be non-binding, it's hard to imagine a no would be overcome. And indeed, even a yes or general enthusiasm may make it that much harder or more difficult to later say no. And thus, even in a non-binding form, a preliminary thumbs up or thumbs down from council likely sets the expectation for the future outcome of the project in a way that I don't want to restrict the council to. I'm also somewhat concerned about the enforcement, not about having enforcement, of course, that's absolutely essential, but I'm imagining what it means to terminate a contract zone. For example, if we approve a second house on a non-conforming lot, like we've talked about and have done in my ward, or if we increase density in a downtown building, and then the contract gets terminated, what does that mean for the building that exists and the people that live in it? And how does termination work in that sense? How is it not inhumane and enforceable? And then my kind of final concerns are about some of the resources available. I think with maybe 38 or 40 active contract zones, only a couple of which require ongoing monitoring or enforcement or reporting, I'm not sure there's a need for a new position or extensive fees to monitor these things. I think that can be done. I think that can be done as part of our ongoing workflow. And especially if we think about those issues when crafting the contract itself, I think we can build in those processes in ways that current staff can meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? So I did some research. I just want to point everybody's attention to Workshop Item A from August 13, 2018, from Denise Clavett, Planning and Development Director at the time, to City Administrator Sutherland, Mayor Lovell, and City Council. And it's a contract zone analysis project that was put together by Planning and Economic Development interns Emma Cota and Ally Richards. And the important piece, I think, here is in Section 2 of the memorandum. Since the City of Saco's zoning ordinance adoption in 1985... I was five years old at the time. ...50 contract zone agreements have been developed, with 32 remaining active at that time. 32 in 2018. The balance of the 50 CZAs were rescinded, excuse me, rescinded, never developed, or transferred to new property owners. Located throughout Saco, most cluster around Route 1 and Route 112, and relative to other comparable towns in cities in Maine, indicates that the zoning ordinance may not be compatible with Saco's changing needs and considerable residential and commercial growth since 1985. And the majority of Saco's contract zones were constructed, at least in part, to permit non-conforming land use within a zoning district. And if you actually go into Page 4, they talk a little bit more about that and what was the necessity for some of the elderly and disability housing. That's a very commonly proposed use, particularly in residential zones, and did not allow elderly and disability housing at the time that the agreements were drafted. But then in 2012, a zoning ordinance was amended to permit elderly and disability housing as a conditional use in residential zones. So I read that because that was the precursor to the ZORS. That's why we looked to create the zoning ordinance revisioning process and reduce the amount of different zones that were in there and different uses down to something that was more manageable for folks that were looking to do business in this City of Saco. And I think, as Counselor Purdy pointed out, I'm not sure the numbers are correct, but as Counselor Purdy pointed out, since the zoning ordinance revision, since we changed the zoning ordinance, we've approved two contract zones and updated a couple others and released a couple others. So again, I don't believe that contract zones are a huge problem in the community. I think the problem was the fact that we had a zoning ordinance that was 40 years old and needed to be updated to move along with the times, just like many other communities. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, overall, I'd agree with those statements. I think that that particular study was done at my request back in 2017, 2018. And while we did adopt the ordinance in '85, the City of Saco didn't have a contract zone until 1994. And early on, I think, most of those contract zones, I mean, Mr. Hatch was a recipient of one, were pretty minor overall. I would say that since my time on council, so for the last nine years, there have been more frequent contract zones and more particularly of a concern for myself, anyway. It comes down to not when you play with the dimensional standards or, you know, a little tweak here and there, it's when you take uses that have large impacts in zones that they don't fit into. And that's where we run into these problems consistently, at least during my time. And I think that, you know, Counselor Hatch's ordinance here really works to deal with those. No, I don't think anybody's sat up here and said, let's get rid of contract zones. There are a time and a place, or as you've said yourself, Mr. Mayor, it's a tool in the tool shed or a tool belt, and I think they should remain. But I do think that the current ordinance has a lot of ambig... yeah, ambiguities there that, you know, leave it open for abuse, really. And I think we've seen that, and I'm not... I mean, honestly, if I was on the other side, maybe I'd try to take advantage of some of these things, too. You know, from a council perspective, I think I've seen, on many occasions, councils vote based on what they think is... they like and not based on the standards. And cleaning up what the standard, the language is in those standards really goes a long ways to ensuring that all parties are happy, or at least, you know, equally unhappy, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I will add to that discussion. My wife and I were the recipient of what I think was the third contract zone issued in the City of Saco for Winter Haven on King Street. And I remember the process vividly. I thought it was very fair. I remember having to argue that putting... and at that time, elderly housing was not a permitted use in the zone, and having to argue, in concert with the comprehensive plan, that that proposed use that we had had a unique quality about it, and that uniqueness was the fact that we were sitting on a parcel of land that was three quarters of an acre in size in a community, in a neighborhood that had typically the 1950s vintage subdivision of a quarter-acre lot. And so we had the unique opportunity to introduce an alternative residential use to a residential zone, and found that that objective was consistent with the comprehensive plan. So contract zoning has its place. I think the folks that I talked to, who have had more recent engagement with the city in arguing for contract zones, have admitted to me that they have found it as a tool to, you know, work their way around zoning restrictions, issues that, you know, they find, we'll just get a contract zone and we'll be able to get the project through. And that's not everyone, but that's some of them. So I think, you know, we have a tool in the toolbox. I think it needs to be sharpened. And if we can sharpen that tool, I think all that will do for us is improve this entire process moving forward and eliminate... I'm hopeful that it will eliminate... you know, I've been here on the council for a year. I think we've had... I listed on my information, I think we've had six come before us, five of them, one was a vote, but five had various issues that we needed to resolve. There were vagaries in the contract itself and the ordinance. What do we do? How do we handle that? And I think that kind of volume of activity indicates that we need to fix something. So that's really what I'm looking to do here with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion on this item, that brings us past New Business, brings us to Item 11, Administrative Updates. City Administrator Kenrath.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate our Communications Department, Andrew Dickinson, and our whole department. They were recently the recipients of awards from the National Association of Government Communicators in the categories of informational video and photographer's portfolio for their video highlighting the WRRD process. So our Communications Department continues to put out great content to promote citizen engagement and information, and we appreciate them for all of their efforts, but congratulations to Andrew Dickinson, most importantly. A reminder, June 14 is Primary Election Day coming up. All wards will vote, if you want to vote in person, at Thornton Academy on Election Day. Absentee ballots are now available, and the last day to vote in person absentee will be Thursday, June 9. To preview an upcoming agenda, our next agenda for June 6, we'll have a public hearing on the award boundaries, that was the topic tonight, a first reading on Chapter 168 updates, a first reading on the Woodman Avenue zoning amendment, a new business item for dissolving a CZA at 201 North Street, ADU sprinkler requirements presentation, an MS4 awareness presentation, Chapter 186 action plan, a discussion from WRRD and Public Works, so moving a sewer line on Buxton Road, and we'll have an executive session also. On June 1, there will be a Battle of the Badges Blood Drive at the Fire Department on North Street. The Police and Fire Department will be hosting a blood drive. Donors will have their choice of which department their donation will count toward, and the winning department will receive a trophy. Anyone interested can sign up for an appointment at redcrossblood.org/give, or you can just contact Malika in our Fire Department at 282-3244, or email her. Lastly, I'd like to thank everyone at the Leary Farm for recently hosting me, as well as Economic Development Director Denise Clavett, for a tour and discussion of their operations. Leary Farm is a family-owned farm that has been here for literally hundreds of years, and we want to thank them for all of their commitments to the community. They are a major piece of our community going back many years. So thank you for the tour. Thank you for the hospitality, and we hope they remain thriving and vibrant operation here in Saco for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Moving on to Item 12, council discussion and comment this evening? Any council discussion and comment? Seeing no council discussion and comment. Item 13, is there a motion to enter executive session? Counselor Berman.
Be it ordered that the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, D, Labor Contract Negotiations, E1, Consultation of Legal Counsel, and E2, Consultation of Legal Counsel.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to enter executive session at 8:05 PM. Executive session will be downstairs in the conference room in five minutes. Downstairs in the conference room, five minutes. Downstairs in the conference room, five minutes.
Okay, we're back on the record here. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy to exit executive session. Any discussion? Roll call to exit. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to exit executive session at nine eleven. Councilor Berman, do you have a motion from executive session?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I move we authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement between the city of Saco and Teamsters Local Union Number 340 between Saco Public Works and Parks from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That concludes report from executive session. Brings us to item 15. Adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. At nine twelve, have a great evening, everyone.